Okay, thanks for coming out everybody, we're going to call the meeting to order and start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks again for coming out, um, we'll start with the approval of the agenda, any additions, deletions, or corrections? Dan, do you have anything?
No.
I will add just one thing, under new business probably, and, uh, special meeting discussion.
Chris, can we add another, um, under attorney, another closed session for the labor negotiations?
We just asked now, so the first one, litigation update will not be recorded at the labor negotiations facility. Neither one, so neither one of those will be recorded, right? Okay, no anything, Johnny?
I'm good.
Under mayor's report, I'm gonna have a little something on the KM Stone Drifters, so we'll have that there as an update or request. Hey, entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks Dan, do you have a second?
Second.
Thanks Dwayne, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Consent agenda, I think it's in your packet there, any questions for Nancy, anything that was in the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Thanks Dwayne, do you have a second?
Just one thing, it's just a correction, I had asked Nancy about the amusement for the legion. It was just in the wrong line, the dollar amount is right, it just, but when I looked at it, I tallied it up and I came up with the wrong number. And she clarified it with me, but I just wanted to make sure that you guys.
The number's correct.
Yeah, the number was correct, it was just, looked confusing.
Alright, anyone else?
I was wrong, the labor negotiation is recorded.
Okay, Dwayne has a motion to approve, one second.
Second.
Thanks Ronnie, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, visitors of the council have one card, Jerry Deese.
Thank you, Gerald Deese, 806 Westville Court, Casson, Minnesota. I'm president of care, the, our mission is to protect and our preservation of our historic here in town. And, uh, just like to talk about that North Park Wall that had been, suppose, uh, to be demolished. And I could thank you for at least, you know, letting us know about it before you tore it down and then told us it was bad. And, uh, I'd also like to thank you for giving the people of Casson a chance to save it. I think, uh, it's, uh, you know, maybe we can't save it all, maybe we can save part of it, you know, so, um, I just wanted to let you know that there are people out there that are in favor of keeping it. And so let's, you know, hope we can work together. Who would be a contact person to talk about the estimate or how things?
Park dragger.
Okay, alright. And just another point, I was wondering, how come the city council minutes aren't in the paper?
I don't know, they're listed that we had the meeting, but I don't think they have to be anymore.
Yeah, that's what I understood, because we had stopped it, it was started again and then stopped again, um, because the other information isn't available, so I think the council did away with publishing.
Yeah, they're, because it's on the website, I believe we don't require to do that, and see if it's about four or five hundred bucks a month.
Yeah, well, I don't even know if we had known about this, if it hadn't been for the new administrator making headline news. The minutes are in there, and that's where we're at this. So, and it, amazing, the only people I've talked to don't even know about it yet.
Okay, no, good point, I think that was, that was when that started.
Yeah, I don't recall right off either.
Been awhile.
Yeah, I know, I haven't been able to recall.
That was my answer, thanks for pointing, appreciate it. Okay, on to the mayor's report, I added that, uh, KM Stone Drifters, I got a letter from, or a letter, a phone call from one of the directors there. KM Stone Drifters is gonna be acquiring or, has, some property's been donated for them to be able to put a shop to store their equipment, they're gonna, right here in town, just to the north of here a little bit. And so they're applying for a grant, and wonder if the city, they asked me to do it, I just said I brought it by, everybody here since, I won't speak for everybody. If we'd be willing to write a letter of support, um, in their efforts to get the grant for the new groomer, that they would be housing here in town, but I think it's a good idea, if the snowmobile trains bring people to town, lets people leave town as they're going on their trail. So, I think if, it'd be okay if I penned a letter of support, and then basically they're seeking a grant from outside sources, just want a letter of support from the city. That's okay with everybody to, and then also, they also offer the snowmobile training courses. Because on our city website, there's a link to the county offers a program. KM Stone Drifters also offers the same program, but it's a little bit different, where you can do some of the stuff online, and commit, take the test, and then the skills in person. So it allows for people that don't have the two or three days, whatever it is, to go sit in the classroom. So I think we could probably add that as an option, if they supply us the information, so that go here with everybody too. So then I'll just let them know, somebody should get the information, they can get on the website.
Yep.
Uh, next one on the mayor's report is the budget discussion, so I'd like to thank council, Nancy, Linda, everybody who came early, Charlie, for the budget discussion. We, we had a discussion, we had made some recommendations that we will decide on, but, uh, back in September, the preliminary levy was an increase of about thirteen and a quarter percent, roughly. And we had kinda come to a consensus, we can't really make a decision till we vote on it, but during our work session, that we got that down to an increase of about seven point nine nine percent, so just shy of eight percent, let's call it eight percent. So we took about five and a quarter percent off there. To make that happen, we did not approve the request to hire two new police officers. We are waiting to budget the, for the free on replacement at the ice arena for one year. And we did leave in the Safe Rouse, just going to the big items, the Safe Rouse School was left in, because that's a two-year, four-year commitment, a year two. And we did leave in, um, as of now, the increase from a part-time to a full-time position in the public works, which is an increase of about eleven thousand dollars to the levy. So that's kinda what we have for consensus, and I'm gonna open it up for public input. So if anybody has any public input that they'd like to share with us, before we take any action on that, we could open up the public forum for anybody to speak.
Chris, did you want me to give a presentation or not?
Yep.
Okay, just checking, just let me know when.
Well, I guess I just didn't see, okay, sure. Anybody else in the public have something to say? We'll close the public input, and Nancy's got a presentation.
Well, if you don't wanna hear it, it's, this one's usually very brief, it's not like our, uh, summer annual, or springtime annual review for the next fiscal year. But just a few things related to property taxes, one of the first things we say, we used to be required by the state to have a, a hearing on this. They've done away with that, but we're still gonna call it a taxation hearing, gives us an opportunity for input. But just to make sure you all know that you're welcome to give input at any time. Call the city hall with any questions, if you have any, um, questions about the budget, or the operations, or anything like that too. But you know that your council's always willing to listen. So just a few things that we touch on this time of year, is what comprises the tax levy. At this time of year, we also do our budget, so after we approve the levy, we'll be looking at the budgets. On the, um, left-hand side is what the components of the general fund. That's the part where we determine our levy. It includes general fund, which is what you think of as, you know, admin, streets, police, fire department. Also, in this case, includes the library and the EDA, because we levy for those things. So we essentially usually work on a break-even too, we look at what the budgets are that are needed for those particular departments. We offset them with the fees that you see here, local government aid. We receive over about a million dollars a year from the state. We have an amount of fees, and you'll see those in the other slide, and then the tax levy. But on the right side are enterprise funds, and we expect those to be self-sustaining. The revenues that we make from, um, utility rates are used to support the operations. And if any profits are made, any extra funds are kept in those enterprise funds, because any dollars that are excess over and above, year after year, we use for capital projects, so that we don't have to increase rates any more than normal. Uh, other factors that affect our property taxes, as a lot of you know, is valuation increases. And we've seen a lot of that this year, so changes in the market value. If any of you ever have questions about an increase in your valuation, that happens in April, and that's when you go to the county to question your valuation. And they always advise that if you're going to question the valuation, you need to come with some of your own research by checking on properties that have already been sold in the area. Second item there, changes in property class rates, that usually happens at a statewide level, and that hasn't happened for several years. Um, we may be impacted by property taxes, if we had to, say, increase our property taxes, offset loss of local government aid at the state level. Other costs involved, health and safety, anything else might be impacted. And the last one is that impact of installation, a lot of the valuation increases that we saw, because the increase in home values costs a lot more to buy houses these days. And, and that was the counties just catching up to where their ratios needed to be with respect to the state guidelines. So here's our budgets, again on the left-hand side, the city expenses. Um, a total levy of a four point eight-ish million, you can see we are getting a million one hundred seventy thousand from LGA. We have other fees that are collected and transfers, and that leads us to our, our tax levy. Again, we normally budget and levy based on a break-even on the general fund side. On the enterprise side, we don't have last year's numbers to compare to it, but I'll let you know that they're nominal increases, except for two areas. One is in SURE, council, um, uh, essentially told us that we're going to start addressing our INI issues. So we have several hundred thousand dollars that are available already in the SURE fund, fortunately. So there, and we're going to have a greater expense there to address some of that INI pro, uh, INI issues through the programs that the council has already adopted. And the same a little on the storm side, a hundred thousand or so that will be used for addressing INI issues there as well. Otherwise, the rest are kind of the normal increases that we have. Generally speaking, um, payroll, about a two point five percent wage increase, and a lot of that is mandated by the union contracts that we have. When this slide was made, before the discussion council had tonight, it was proposed to add two new full-time police officers. In the budget, proposed budget is increasing age, part-time street person to full-time. A year or so ago, the council moved toward having a fleet program, which would replace our vehicles on a regular basis, hopefully eliminating unnecessary repairs. And then the, the rates that were, um, proposed by our fiscal agent, who does a picture view of our programs and our current rates and whatnots. These were their rates, the utility rates that were recommended through that review earlier this summer. On a graph basis, you can see where the tax part goes. So each of the general fund components are offset by whatever charges we may receive. And then on a net basis, here is where it goes. So you can see the brown part here, um, that's our police budget. Next one is street, parks, capital and other, and you can see the rest. This is our debt, we have about eight hundred thousand in debt that we have to pay off every year, and we have to levy for that. And that pays for the street portions of some of our construction projects. The water pays for water, SURE pays for SURE, and whatnot. So here's where we have our seventeen years of history, you can see the percentage increases each year that have been proposed and adopted, up until this year, this was the proposed levy. You may hear shortly that they're looking at something less than that amount. But the rest are the actual increases that we saw year after year, with each of them thirteen, sixteen point two one percent. That's when we had the Aquatics Center levy, and we took on that new debt, and that's why there was a big increase that year. We always compare this time to how we look compared to, um, other cities in the area. And this is the local government aid that we receive, and calculating on a per capita basis, you can see with the cities like Stewartville, Cannon Falls, Lake City, and Casson, comparable sizes. We also receive about the same kind of support per person. And it just gives you an idea about some of the other cities in the area as well, too. We just received the market values from the county. And if you look up here, they again, they send this information to us with the other cities in the county. And based on, oh, I guess I cut it off, based on our proposed levy, it's a tax rate of about seventy-five percent. But if we dropped it down to even six percent, which was one of the ranges the council was considering, it's right in that seventy percent range. So your, your tax rate as a percentage based on your market value is going to be seventy to seventy-five percent. And then lastly, we were just looking at, we usually bring one of these out, and it's hard to show, um, so I probably won't mention some of that detail, council might be able to see it in their copies a little better. But, um, our proposed tax increase was thirteen point seven two percent. So if you took the dollar amount of the city tax on your proposed tax bill, and, and everything else in a, you know, static state, your dollars would have gone up thirteen point seven two percent. But because of the market value increases across the county, and across the city, the pie got bigger. So the shares got smaller, even though it was a large increase. So your overall percentage increase in dollars is not the thirteen point seven two percent. And, and that's, again, related to maybe your property values increasing, but overall, the property value is increasing in the city of Casson. We had a lot more to share this levy burden with, by having increased, uh, business properties or increased valuations. So any questions related to that, I know I touched on it all fairly quickly, but it just gives you an idea where we're at with respect to levy and budget characteristics for the city.
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks Nancy, appreciate it. Okay, so thanks Nancy for that, we had our public input, we have, buddy? You came in later, did you have something you wanted to say about the budget?
I can't hear you.
Did you have something you wanted to let us know about the budget?
Yeah. Where do I do it?
Right up here, just name and address, and then just share with us your input.
In two thousand and six, I bought a house here in San, in, uh, Casson, and I had a house in San Antonio, Texas. In San Antonio, when you get to be sixty-five, they freeze your school tax. I remember when I was in high school, many, many years ago, the teacher said, you think you're getting a free education, but let me tell you something, it's not free at all. And boy, have I ever found that out, with the taxes I've been paying. The tax in San Antonio total was fourteen hundred dollars. Here, it was three thousand dollars. For older people, I think it's ridiculous that you don't freeze their school tax. I think it's mean to do that. When you spend money, you're taking it out of the pockets of the people of the city. And you better remember that, because it hurts a lot of people. So I did not become a resident of Casson until I had to, because my wife got Parkinson's with dementia, and our family is here, and I couldn't get back to San Antonio. There are some other problems I've had with the city that I think are ridiculous as well, but won't go into them now.
Thank you very much, sir. So we've got the resolution for us on the proposal that we had, so we're going from the thirteen point seven four percent down to the seven point nine nine. That's what we have on the table. Entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks Ronnie?
I'll second that.
Thanks Dan, and just for the record, that needs to be a number, Nancy said, so that's, uh, three billion three hundred and seventy thousand and three hundred and twenty-four dollars, twenty-seven dollars, which represents seven point nine nine percent.
Yep, the resolution will reflect that.
Okay. Okay, we have first and second, and your discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. And then step C is to approve the budget based on that levy, so entertain a motion to approve the budget with that levy.
So moved.
Thanks Dwayne, do you have a second? Thanks, no, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Public forum, I read that. Committee report, EDA adopt revolving loan funding guidelines and policies. So that's step one in your packet. Dan, anything to add on that?
No. We've gone through it at the EDA board a couple different times, trying to figure the best way to do it.
And so what this does, is to kinda, so we used to have a revolving loan fund that was used with some federal and state dollars, but it came with a lot of strings attached to it. If the EDA wanted to loan that money out, um, there had, there was jobs tied to it, there were all these ties to it. But anyway, we had to give that money back, because apparently it hadn't been used correctly. So that money was all turned back to the state that came to us sometime in the late eighties, early nineties, somewhere, whatever. So we have nothing in our revolving loan fund. So what we did is we charged Nicholas, who's our CEDR representative, to come up with some guidelines for our own revolving loan fund, as far as what our guidelines would be without all those restrictions. So now we have the money that we allocate in the budget to, last year it was the facade improvement program. We can take that money, if EDA decides they wanna continue the facade improvement program, or put part in that, part revolving loan fund, we can start to build up our own revolving loan fund to help businesses in Casson, kinda with our kinda set of guidelines versus being handcuffed by the federal and state regulations. Any questions on that? Entertain a motion to approve EDA's revolving loan fund guidelines and policies.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks Dan, do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks Dwayne, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Old Business Number One, twenty twenty P ordinance, which we had come back from last meeting with, uh, redlined with the changes. Thank you, easier to read, see what the changes are.
I really do appreciate that.
Sure, we'll try and do that on a normal basis.
Any questions for Nancy on that? Thanks again for doing that Nancy. Entertain a motion to approve the two thousand twenty P ordinance.
I'll make that motion.
Ronnie, do you have a second? No, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. New business, Dwayne, you wanted to add something there?
Yeah, um, since we've already set the budget, I would want to give the council something to think about for the next nine months as we contemplate next year's budget. Is that recently, um, we've had some significant special meetings with, uh, litigation mediation, and union negotiations and things. And currently, our special meeting compensation is thirty-five dollars. And with these marathon meetings of eight to ten hours that we've been spending, to me, thirty-five dollars just doesn't seem appropriate. So I would like to, uh, the council at least to consider at next year's budget time, that we look to changing that resolution. This, from what I understand, this, uh, does not fall under the auspices of the state rule as far as base council pay, in which there's certain times or certain years in which you can change your, the council pay. Since this is a special meeting and set by resolution, we don't think this applies. So, uh, we should be able to at least consider it and possibly make a change to that, uh, resolution this time next year. I just think it's appropriate that, whether this council or future councils for meetings that are well above four hours and you're actually conducting business and not just attendance, I think the special meeting compensation should be greater than thirty-five bucks.
Okay, you're talking just a special meeting, not talking about, we're not talking about like Rochester with the?
No, 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 I'm just talking about special meetings.
Just to clarify that.
And currently too, if you're allowed for your pay for the special meetings, you're up to six, thirty-six every six months.
Right, thirty-six meetings.
Thirty-six meetings, anything app, you know.
So the base pay, we're not talking about, because the base pay for councils, three thousand dollars a year, for mayor, it's four thousand dollars a year, so we're not.
Yeah, we're not talking that.
Okay, alright. That's just for information, if you do think about, thank you.
That's, that's me.
Okay, so engineers report, Dwayne's gonna give an update on that, I just got a little flustered, because Brandon can't be here to be, have an engineer part.
In your council package, you've got, uh, a electronic copy of the placematch. Brandon and I met with MINDOT representatives last week, because we had requested the meeting to consider, for MINDOT to consider, um, Casson participating in a program in which to get funds to put in a roundabout at Sixteenth Street near the high school. There is a program, there's funding for this through MINDOT every year, and communities can have the ability to apply. And we just recently got some money from, for another project with, from MINDOT. So this would come under the, out of the same bank account essentially from the state. The committee is made up by a number of county engineers, they're the decision-making board to make a recommendation to the state as to whether they get, uh, it gets approved or not. So we made our, uh, proposal to this committee, uh, and with the map, it shows the outlay of potential roundabout at Sixteenth Street. And what we intend to do beyond that with the extension of Sixteenth Street over to County Road Twenty-One, and some internal streets, uh, which would align behind Cunningham's things. All of that, none of that would be part of the funding, but it all is related as what future expansion would be, so to help justify the need for the roundabout. It was well received, of course, no promises were made. The, the one caveat is that since Casson is the proponent of this project, by state policy, we would have to share fifty-fifty on the construction cost on that. Had MINDOT come to the city with the proposal to put it in, then the proportion would have been different than the fifty-fifty split. But of course, with MINDOT coming with the proposal, it would have been on their timeframe. We presented this, that we wanted, uh, Sixteenth Street, or the roundabout at Sixteenth Street, to be considered with the forthcoming, um, improvements of Highway Fifty-Seven. So we able to save tax dollars just because we're all there doing the construction at that point. So the pledge was made, um, no promises again was given. But if we are awarded, um, this project, and it would go into- But if we are, um, awarded, um, this project and it would go into, um, into the queue, we would be on the hook for fifty percent of the construction cost. So, uh, there's much more work to be done down the road. Uh, this is just the initial, um, first shot across the bow for them. Um, there's a selection process, so depending on how the selection process goes, if we get to be one of those considered, then we would have to get much more deeper into the construction costs and we would have the opportunity to make a decision at that time as to whether we would, uh, go forward with it or not.
And our costs could be covered with MSAS dollars, correct?
Some of it, yeah, we could shift some of our state aid dollars for streets to that, yeah.
There was also a grant we were looking at too, right?
That, that is part of this, yeah.
Okay, thanks Duane, thanks for going to the meeting too, appreciate that. Any questions for Duane on that? No? Thanks for the update. Okay, one, fire department, there's a request for a leave of absence. My type, so that letter's in there. I'll make a motion to approve the one-year leave of absence. Thanks Bel, all in favor said aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We're gonna go to our attorney's report now, which is, we have two closed sessions, so we're gonna have to clear the council chambers while those are closed. Uh, one is for an update on our local litigation and that part of the meeting will not be recorded. And then the second part will be recorded and that will be for an update on our labor negotiations that are ongoing. So we're gonna close the meeting now, we'll reopen the meeting back up in just a little bit. Thank you very much, everybody. Make sure everyone's...